Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 22nd, 2019 Business Meeting of the Putnam Valley School Board of Education. I ask if you'll join me in standing and shooting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks. Jump right in with some fun stuff like resolving to approve the minutes for the Board of Education meetings of June 20th, July 2nd, and August 15th, 2019.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Just to let everybody know that the treasurer's reports for May and June of 2019 are available in the business office. And now we're going to move on to an administrator report from Mr. David Spittle on facilities operations. Welcome, David.
Hello, Mr. Ferraro. Hi, so we've done a lot of work this summer, some of which ended about three minutes ago. So you'll see that at the end of my slide. And so I'll just go right into it because there's a lot to show you here. So the highlights, we did work inside the buildings. We completed the energy performance contract, built a wellness trail. And I'm going to talk about an arrival experience here for the athletic facilities. And we moved a tent, which I'll show you later. So the high school and middle school, this is the staff. You know, they're an incredible staff. They take pride in the buildings and you can just walk around and see that they, every inch of these buildings are scrubbed and cleaned. And these are the folks that did that. So I wanted to put their names up here. So if you see them around, you know, tell them what a great job they've done because they're really proud of their work. And then we had some summer workers. Every year we bring summer workers in to help us not only do the cleaning that we do annually, but also then it enables some of our custodial staff to do some other projects here in the buildings. So the arrival experience, I feel is important to give people, the students and faculty, a first, the first impression of when they walk into the building says who we are, I think, and tells them, you know, what our district is about and what their experience is going to be. So you can see I take a special pride and so do the, so does the custodial staff in the entryways to our buildings. One thing that I knocked off my list, we did a ton of things last year at the high school here because of the unit lunch, the new busing situation, and the security upgrades. So I wanted to take it a little easier on a budget this year. But we, so I didn't do as many projects, but one thing we did was the locker rooms downstairs. And they were really beat up after 20 years. A lot of the lockers were beyond repair and dented up. So after talking with Brian Burrow and coaches and the physical education staff, we decided that we'd take some lockers out, take the ones that are dented and beyond repair out, and replace those with hooks and benches. And we made areas for coaching and put whiteboards up and replaced some of the locker areas with some benches and came out real nice. So don't go down there now, though, the football team is using it and it's a little stinky. So the middle school, obviously, we're doing a ton of work next, starting next spring with the capital project at the middle school. So essentially, what I, what we did over there was a real deep cleaning. And you can see if you walk through, it's just came out beautiful. One thing we did over there was this was a area that was used for storage and it was something, a weird area at the middle school that we didn't know what to do with. We had the architects look at it seven different ways and they couldn't figure it out. So it essentially is going to be this little weird area. So we painted one of the walls blue, we cleaned it out, made it less of a storage area, more of like their first introductions to like a student commons area. There, those two, those two tables aren't, we're going to put two high-top tables there with chairs around so students can do homework and such out there. On the opposite wall, we put a green screen for some of the videography stuff that they can do there. Elementary school, again, here's the staff, the custodial staff and the summer workers that worked over there. They had a special second summer in a row where they, their school was a disaster. You know, the last year was the whole HVAC system with the geothermal and all that. So their, the ceilings were ripped out of the school and it was really hard on the staff to get, to get to work around that and get it all done. So of course, we hit them up this year with replacing 102 windows and every, almost every window over there. And so, you know, just, just keeping it together and able to do the cleaning over there was yeoman's work. So this is the staff and clean the summer workers that did all that for us. Here's a picture of the windows being replaced and the abatement work was done over there without incident. So the windows look beautiful and they are the final leg of the EPC project that we have been working on, that we're so proud of here. So I'm just going to go over that real quickly. I know you've all heard it before, how the, since this now is done, I'm going over, met with the content solutions just last week, where we're now looking at measuring the results to make sure they match up with what their anticipated goals were for energy savings and that, so that we can, you know, pay the bond down and then some. So just a reminder, we did LED lights throughout the district, replaced all the lights, solar panels on just about every flat roof that we could do them on, geothermal work, heating and cooling, geothermal, about two-thirds of the elementary school is now geothermal, and the solar wind poles to have the student interface, or student, students can get a public-facing statement about our sustainability here in Putnam Valley. And it also puts data out so that students can do, to do research on sustainable energy. The, I just did a quick summary of some of the energy and cost savings. Electricity, we used to use about 3.1 million kilowatts per year. Our savings with the LED lights and there's some other work done on the HVAC controls that had significant savings, but that reduced our usage down to about 1.75 million kilowatts, a significant deal. And then with the solar, about 350,000 coming in from the solar. So the new usage, the new draw on the, from the electric grid is about 1.4 million kilowatts, it's supposed to be a million kilowatts. And so we reduced our energy draw and cost from electricity down by about 56 percent. Our geothermal at the elementary school reduce, is promised to reduce our oil usage there by about 30,000 gallons a year. So the annual savings should be about 200,000 plus. It better be. Our environmental impact, which is obviously important, was, this is a little hard to read, but we eliminated 1.1181 metric tons of CO2 emissions, equal to 413 cars removed from the road, 727 tons of landfill, or 16 acres of forest being preserved through our work here. Putnam Valley leads on energy sustainability. I keep telling people we're the best from a, most sustainable from an energy standpoint of any district in the state. I believe we are. I hope someone tries to beat us. This was a baseline utilization, energy utilization, this is prior to us doing this work. You can see the high school, middle school. This 80 was the national average, it's about 83, which is 1,000 BTUs per square foot. It's how they try to take national rankings or try to, try to have data that's applicable across different school districts. And the BTUs per square foot per year is a measure that they use nationally. And you can see our high school and middle school, prior to the work, were about half of the national average. And the elementary school was higher than that because of the oil use over there. Now, after the work, and I, we don't have the results yet, but that green bar in the elementary school should be cut by about two-thirds and that blue bar should be cut in half. And the blue bars in the high school and middle school should be cut by about 56 percent. So you're going to see us just over 20. So we're going to be one-fourth of the national average as far as the energy usage in a school district. And I think we should all be proud of that. So to the grounds, the custodial grounds crew, all the work we did out there was done with these six people. We had Scott and James and Nick, and then we had three summer workers. One thing we worked on is the arrival experience for the athletic area. That was, this is a before shot. Here's during, we took the trees down. After we took one tree down ahead of the graduation, it looked a lot nicer. And that kind of inspired us and Jeremy and I went back and forth on it and he said, "Go ahead, Dave." So we took them down. And it looks great. So here's after, you know, this is a big difference. School buses used to drive around looking for, you know, where's the turf? And now, you know, there you are, you see the, you see the field as you pull up to the end of the driveway. And if you go down there, you know, it's going to look even better than this in a day or two. Dr. Luff was very supportive. We let him drive the tractor when he came to visit us. Fran's tree, this was a tree that was donated for Dr. Wills by the Education Foundation and we decided to put it at the athletic entry, excuse me, near the trailhead because of her belief in the wellness and health and wellness, that this, this trail's philosophy behind the trail, the philosophy. So, so we built a little trailhead there with a little patio. If you go see it, it's kind of cool. It'll also offer some opportunities for middle school teachers to do some, and high school teachers, of course, it's a combined deal, to use an outdoor area for teaching and that. So this is the PV Wellness Trail. That's my moniker, it can be called something else, it doesn't matter. But, you know, I really believe in sustainability and a United Nations Sustainability Development Goal Number Three is good health and well-being for all ages. So this is a trail that was originally conceived of, you know, in memory of Kaitlyn Bagnato, done by Eagle Scout, Miss Brown, what's the son's name?
Steven Brown.
Steven Brown, sorry. And, and it was going to be a cross-country trail. So as this, we kind of built on that concept here and, and made it a one-mile loop around the perimeter of the property. You can see it here from Google Earth. I tried to do the best I can to draw it, but when I did it, when I measured it on Google Earth, it came to exactly one mile. So it's one mile to the foot. And, and I made it, we made it a about four-foot wide, very even path so that not, it's not just for cross-country. Of course, they can use it and the cross-country, because they're very excited about having one of the nicest, especially modified, cross-country courses around, but it can also be used by the faculty and community for a beautiful walk around, around the park here. It's fantastic, really, really proud of it. So this is what we're in for, first couple walks around, this is what I was looking at up in the woods there. And it was a little intimidating. I said, "Okay, Jeremy, I can do this in about two weeks." Yeah, well, a little aggressive. And this is what it looks like now, after. So we can, that's that same area that I took a picture of before and after. I wish I had more before pictures, but I don't. So I'm going to take you guys on a little quick tour of the, of the trail, starting at the trailhead. I've already given some free tours and of the trail and I'm really excited to tell people about other opportunities that we can, we can do to make it even nicer there. So I was able to convince them to come with me, some faculty. And so at the end of the middle school parking lot, we had that trailhead and we're making it right now out of it, okay? Going toward, going towards Oregon Corners there. So this is that section up there. I call it the Highfield Section. And we can, again, change the names. One of the ideas we have is to have different clubs and groups sponsor different sections of the trail to maintain them over time and improve them in different ways. We go down the hill, this is backed by the softball field. This was a very steep hill that we put a lot of fill from other projects in here and made it nice and level so it's not a steep walk and you can run down it easily and walk down it very comfortably. There was two retaining walls back there with some pine trees and this is what it looks like now. It's a beautiful little walk through the pine trees. We put that split rail fence on the left there because it's a steep drop and we want to keep people away from that, keep people safe. But it's become, I was not going to do this, but Brian Mansfield talked me into it and it was a lot of work, but it ended up, it's one of my favorite parts of the trail here. I call it the pines. Now you come out of those pines and you're back up behind that soccer field back there. And so it goes back behind that fence around the corner and then again, now we're heading towards, back towards the high school by the fence. And then when you come down away from the fence, this is a spot that we used to mow and it was several football fields worth of grass mowing on the hillside, but we're going to let it grow up and we're going to just mow a walking path down through it and have it be like a meadow with, and maybe plant some wildflowers and stuff. And one of the Go Green Club is already looking at maybe some, you know, birdhouses and butterfly guards and stuff in there. So it's a pretty cool part. You come more meadow, you come out of the meadow and this is obviously towards the high school. There's, I painted some lines out there, I'm not sure how I'm going to handle this, but this is going right towards where the new wellness center is going to be. And I painted lines because if you make a left there, the hill is very steep and you could slip. So if you go straight, the hill is a lot less steep. So walk in the lines if you're going to do it. So it curves down, goes across the driveway, will of course do a crosswalk here, and then up the other side. And again, the lines are there, I'm not sure I'm going to, how we're going to handle this to make it look like a nice path, but right now we're just going to walk on the grass. And then we go up around through this pond and it goes, we carved out an area to the left of that retaining pond over there that's really kind of, kind of cool. And then it goes back up into the woods. Towards Foothill now, we're going up along Peak School Hollow towards Foothill and more woods. And then we're going to leave the pond section, that's what that last section was, and go up towards the top of Foothill here. And we, this is again, we're going to just let the grass grow a little bit and mow a path through here. We put up a split rail fence and I think this area looks beautiful, take a walk up there. I also thought it was a good spot for a resting area. In fact, you can see it right through there, through the window, where some of the benches are up there. So the Bagnato family asked us to put the benches that Kaitlyn and her father built up on, up somewhere where people can rest when they walked around the trail and contemplate. So that's what we did. And then we go back into the woods up here and Foothill Section. And this was woodchip mountain. This was very helpful, the town donated all the woodchips and this was dozens of truckloads of woodchips and we were able to spread around and make this, you know, cover all the little bumps and things and make it a really nice trail. And they gave us those for free. And they say they have an endless supply for us. Foothill Section continued, we're almost done. Now this is a little ruins along the way that you can see, this was a water tower from the 1930s that used to service a little bungalow community that was on this property back in the early 1900s. And this is what's left of it, you can check that out as you walk by it. Then you're walking down, down back towards the entry and there you are, across a little bridge that we built across a wash and then back to that trailhead. Okay, so that's the end of the trail. This is why I'm sunburnt and exhausted standing here, is that we decided to move the tent, the groundskeeper's tent that's next to the district office, and it turned into a little bit harder than I thought.
It might actually still be moving.
It might still be moving. This picture was taken about two, what, five hours ago? And I thought it was going to be like, "Oh, we'll be done in another half hour." But then we got stuck on the hill. And you could see, Dr. Luff was, "No, no, what have you done?" So this is still moving. So moving that groundskeeper's tent down to, next to the transportation building, give those guys a little bit warmer place in the winter and cooler place in the summer when they have to do some work. And, and that, you know, it was ugly next to the district office, so.
Can we just, I just want to emphasize that piece. So we certainly weren't looking for extra work to do this summer, but I do want to say, we have fantastic grounds crew and they work really hard. And if you walk in that tent in the summer, it's about 120 degrees. And when you walk in there in the winter, it feels like negative 20 degrees. And they're in there year-round fixing mowers and snow blowers and putting plows on trucks and working in their bare hands in the, in the sweltering heat or the freezing cold. So I really thought it was important that we find a new space for them where they can, where they can have heat and air conditioning. They're not asking for too much, I don't think. In fact, they asked for nothing. So we thought that they would be better served to be near the transportation garage where we have two full-size bays and we have a covered work area outside. And they would have access to heat and air conditioning and all the tools that exist within that garage, ready to work on their machines. And it was, I thought it was the least we can do for, for two men who work endless hours for us. So this was not necessarily an extra thing that we were looking to kill some time with, but it was really, I think, a meaningful idea that they wanted to, we wanted them to be down there and have better working conditions. So that's what drove this, fact that the tent is probably still moving.
It's going to be easy, we're just going to slide it down the hill.
I was promised, like the trailhead, it would be done on Friday, every week. It'll be done Friday, Friday.
Today was the day.
Today's the day. The tent's still moving.
Tent is still moving. It's not going to be in its place until tomorrow, but it's out of the way, we can drive there now. So any questions? That's it. That's the summer work here.
No questions, but just a hearty thank you to everybody who helped make that happen, all of it happen. Thank you. All righty, so we move into reports.
I just want to point out that I'm not leaning against the tree, that tree was falling.
Right.
So I'm holding the tree up from falling all the time. Yeah, let me see these pictures for a second. So good evening, everyone. I just want to talk sort of a procedural change. What Dave did was really what we're going to call our administrative report section and I'm going to invite different administrators for each board meeting to have an opportunity to share some of the things that are going on in their department or in their building. So instead of it always being sort of a standing person, we want to be able to rotate it and be able to provide many administrators, the forum, to share the things that are going on in their department and their building. So it's just a procedural change, you'll notice at each board meeting, we'll have someone else come up and present on what's going on. So I know many people think the summer is a quiet time around schools. From what you just, Dave just shared, you can see it is certainly anything but quiet, it's just a different type of work. And our buildings have really been jam-packed with exciting things going on, not just facilities-wise, but also instructional. So I know we just had our kinder camp experience at the elementary school. It's one of my favorite, the kids are so excited, the parents are terrified. Always lots of tears, mostly from the parents, but it's a great experience. I know my wife works in a neighboring school district and she's always envious of Putnam Valley's kinder camp experience and what we offer for students to help them transition into kindergarten. So that's something that I certainly wanted to highlight. I also wanted to discuss the Community Read, which is something that Dr. Wills had brought to Putnam Valley and has gracefully handed off to Jeanette Pastrata. So Jeanette and some other members of the Putnam Valley hosted one of the Community Read events here in the high school library. I know Dave spoke a lot about the work of the buildings and ground staff and I had the opportunity to actually serve. When I was in high school, I worked both for grounds, with the ground staff for a summer and with the building staff for a summer. So I, I know very well the amount of work that's done in these buildings over the summer and how much, how not fun it is. But I do want to again, give those guys and women kudos. They work extremely hard and when you walk in these buildings and see what they look like, it's amazing the amount of work they get done in a short period of time. Again, the Wellness Trail, again, was a huge undertaking at a very limited expense. Other than resources of hours, there was very little investment. And actually, right before the meeting, we had the opportunity during our annual facilities tour at the Board of Education to take some of the board members on a portion of the trail. The Technology Department is another one that is certainly no rest for the weary over the summer. They do a tremendous amount of work of upgrading and imaging all of our laptops and infrastructure upgrades. I know this summer we did additional infrastructure upgrades for our security measures, including integrations of different communication systems. So that's something I also wanted to acknowledge, the work of the Technology Department. I want to welcome Mr. Matt Mello, our new high school AP. So he will be officially appointed, even though we officially made him start working already. So the process actually had over 125 candidates apply. We brought in over, well, 20 candidates for screenings and four finalists came for an intensive committee interview and performance task. So I want to again congratulate Matt on being appointed tonight as the next high school AP. There's a lot of planning going on. I know that next week, it's certainly, it's go time. So we have new teacher orientation, we have two superintendent's conference days, and we have an administrative team meeting. All of those things are apparently being planned for. It's a very exciting thing. This is the first superintendent's conference day in which I am the superintendent, so I'm trying not to mess anything up. And I'm trying to make it, we're calling it a celebration. And that's really what I wanted to be, is an opportunity for everyone to come back together and celebrate the beginning of the school year. So that's something, stay tuned for more information. There was also a tremendous amount of staff development and curriculum writing, so I want to acknowledge all the teachers and teaching assistants that came in over the summer to be trained on a variety of different programs and instructional initiatives, as well as revision of their curriculum. We had a new kickoff for our second cohort of Innovative Classroom Academy. So I have handed over the reins to Jeanette and she's already led two days of the Innovative Classroom Academy. I think we have almost 15 teachers sign up again for it and that, you'll certainly have updates throughout the school year. We had another training, new cohort trained in the TCIS. So I want to thank Christina Casey and Dan Turner for that. We had our board retreat a couple weeks ago. It was, we had individuals, John and Lynn from Putnam Northern Westchester Boys, he's came to facilitate a portion of it. And we really focused on roles and responsibilities, as well as the development of board goals. We had our ESY and ENL programs in here over the summer, always a highlight, we had an ice cream party at the end of it. And it's, I know it's a tremendous amount of work, the individuals who work that program work hard every day and give up almost their entire summer. So it's, it's a great program, the students get a lot out of it. And I want to again acknowledge the teachers and teaching assistants that make that all possible. Just a quick update on the facilities project, we remain on our timeline. So we're revising, we should be finishing our construction drawings at the end of the summer. We get state ed approval later in the fall. We, late fall, early winter, we'll be going to bidding process and we'll be ready to start work early in the spring, as soon as the ground thaws. We recently had another advisory committee meeting where we discussed updated plans. And the architects and the construction managers will be, will be back on September 12th during the board meeting to present updated plans to the board and to the community. And then one last piece, I'm only mentioning this because I know it was posted by his family on social media, but we're wishing Mike Konik well. For those who don't know, he recently had an accident at his home and he's now recovering. So certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with Mike and his wife and his family and we wish him a speedy recovery. That's it, thank you.
All righty. And I'm doubting we do, but is there any PTA, PTSA presentations this evening? If not, we will move on to... If not, we will move on to new business, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak on any of the listed agenda items at this point before we begin new business. If there's no comment, we'll move on to new business with number one. Jeanette?
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Matthew Mello from his position as a social studies teacher in the high school as per document number 62-20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, effective August 19th, 2019, and appoints Mr. Mello as the high school assistant principal in the high school assistant principal tenure area to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective August 19th, 2019 through August 18th, 2023, at an annual salary of $143,000 prorated. Mr. Mello holds the following certifications: New York School Building Leader Initial Certification and New York State Social Studies 7 through 12 Permanent Certification. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the CSEA agreeing to a revised salary schedule for the school-registered nurses as per document number 58/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board hereby creates a four-tenth special education teacher position at the elementary school effective September 1st, 2019, and appoints Erin Kuchenk to the position as a one-year, part-time, four-tenth, full-time teacher's equivalent appointment effective September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, at step one masters of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Kuchenk holds students with disability 1 through 6 and classroom education 1 through 6 Initial Certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Is she here? Nope. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Nicole Diadonna to a one-year, part-time, .6 FTE social studies teacher position at the high school effective September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, on step one BA of the PVFT schedule, salary schedule. Ms. Diadonna holds social studies 7 through 12 Initial Certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Is she here? Nope. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Nicole Diadonna to a one-year, part-time, .6 FTE social studies teacher position at the high school effective September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, on step one BA of the PVFT schedule, salary schedule. Ms. Diadonna holds social studies 7 through 12 Initial Certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number five.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint James Stockinger to a probationary appointment as a bus driver, effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the Transportation Department on step seven of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Justin Jamison to a probationary appointment as a cleaner, effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the middle school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kim McNeil to a probationary appointment as an office assistant, effective September 3rd, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 29th, 2019, and a minimum, I'm sorry, maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the high school on step two of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the board appoints Joseph T. Mahoney to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSEA salary schedule, and in accordance with the PVCSD policy 9250. Mr. Mahoney holds teaching assistant level one certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number nine.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Jennifer Jonas Cahill to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSEA salary schedule, and in accordance with the PVCSD policy 9250. Ms. Jonas Cahill holds teaching assistant levels one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number 10.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Joanne Nyborg to a probationary appointment as a school monitor, effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary appointment of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number 11.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Rocio Guiero to a four-month-long, to a four-month-long-term substitute position as a Spanish teacher at the high school, effective August 28th, 2019, through December 20th, 2019, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education. At the substitute salary rate of $125 per day, upon issuance of Ms. Guiero's New York State Teacher Certification, the rate of pay will become $250 per day, effective as of the date of issuance of the certification. Ms. Guiero's New York State Spanish 712 Certification is currently pending.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number 12.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Teshwan Mondello to a probationary appointment as a school nurse, effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum period of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the high school on step three of the CSEA nurses' salary schedule, in effect as of 2019-20 school year.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Okay, number 13.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Regina Albano, a high school teacher from the district, effective June 30th, 2020, as per document number 4120 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? I just want to say that we'll be celebrating her retirement when we have our APOL meeting, and she'll be part of our celebration. All in favor? Aye. Number 14.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Holly Freehill, behavior interventionist from the district, effective August 30th, 2019, as per document number 59/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number 17.
Seventeen?
Fifteen.
No?
Okay.
Huh? I don't mind seventeen.
Just seeing if, just seeing if we're paying attention, Mike.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to amend the appointment of Matt Danko, approved at the June 15th, 2017, meeting of the Board of Education as follows. Whereas Matt Danko had been previously tenured as a teacher in New York Public School District or BOSEs, and whereas said teacher has presented proof of receipt of a Section 3012-C and a 3012-D education law APR rating in the final year of service in their previous service in such school districts or BOSEs, now therefore be it resolved upon recommendation of superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Matt Danko to a three-year probationary term as a special education teacher, commencing on September 1st, 2017, and terminating on August 31st, 2020, in the tenure area of special education at Putnam Valley High School on step three masters of the PVFT salary schedule. Mr. Danko holds students with disability grade 7 through 12 mathematics initial certification, mathematics 7 through 12 initial certification, and earth science initial certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said teacher must have at least three years of effective or highly effective APR ratings pursuant to Section 3012-C or 3012-D of the education law during the probationary term that may count, that may count the rating from the previous employment as referenced above, and may not receive an ineffective APR rating in the final year of the probation.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So that's a lot of words. I'm gonna summarize real quick. What that all means is Mr. Danko provided documentation that shows he was previously tenured and had acceptable ratings during the last year of his tenure. So therefore, his probationary period will be reduced from four years to three years.
All in favor? Aye. Number 16.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Eileen Bloom to the position of driver education in-class instructor at the rate of $45 per enrolled student, effective for the 2019-20 school year. Ms. Bloom holds certification as a New York State Department of Motor Vehicles Driver Education Instructor and as a New York State teacher and administrator.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number 17.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the New York State 2019-2020 Income and Eligibility Guidelines for Free and Reduced Price Meals, and adopt the 2019-20 Free and Reduced Price Policy Statement, referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, as document number 40/20, for the Putnam Valley Elementary School, Middle School, and High School, effective July 1st, 2019. And, resolve to approve the following regular prices for student meals: $1.35 for breakfast, all schools, and $2.95 for lunch, high school and middle school, and $2.70 for lunch at the elementary school. Students qualifying for reduced meal pricing will receive their meals at no charge.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, because I just, I got an advocacy update about the, last week, the Department of Homeland Security posted its final version of the public, public change rule in the Federal Register. This proposal, which the New York State School Boards Association opposed, makes a number of changes to items that can be considered in future determinations of an individual, an individual's immigration status. And they're concerned while school meal programs are exempt from the rule, families who fear future reprisals may not take advantage of the needed benefits and services for themselves and their children. And I just, Natalie, I don't know if you can speak to this, I just want to be sure that, that we're doing everything we can so that students that need to be covered or need to have meals are getting meals.
They are. A couple of things. One is our monitors, our office people, everybody, the, between the front office, the people in the cafeteria, our teachers, they know that, that our, how to register students, that if we don't get back paperwork, that we can take certain actions. So I feel confident that all of our students are covered, for sure.
Okay.
People literally come like, looking for me if they're unsure. So I feel confident, I really do. I feel confident.
Okay. All right.
All in favor? Aye. Number 18.
Whereas the annual audit conducted of the district funds and accounts for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, has been completed, and whereas the board deemed it necessary and appropriate to determine the funding of its Article II General Municipal Law and Section 3651-1-A Reserve Fund, as referenced in a resolution dated June 30th, 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes the appropriation of monies from the general fund account of the district to increase the reserve balance in Section 3651 (1-A) Tax Certiori Reserve in the amount of $271,644.40 for judgments and claims that have been filed against the school district, authorizes an increase in the employee benefit accrued library reserve, GML Section 6-P, in the amount of $167,382.79, and authorize the placement of $241,216.16 into the established capital reserve, GML Section 3651 (1), known as Building and Facilities Improvement Reserve Fund, and authorize $404,000 to be placed in the teacher's retirement reserve, an amount equal to the 2% of the liability based on the 2018-2019 allowable salary contribution.
Second.
Questions or comments? Jill, you have anything to add?
Um, not really. We're gonna be having the complete audit report in October, when the final documents are, after the final documents are prepared, and the auditing firm will come and do a full presentation of the entire audit. And these, you know, funds are what I consider pre-audited at this point, and then they become final at the end of the summer, so.
And are we looking, or do we need volunteers to come onto the audit committee?
The audit committee is in full swing with a number, with the, with the correct number of people. However, we do invite, you know, people to apply. We have bylaws and a narrative that explains, you know, who we have on that committee, and that can be found on our website. So if anyone does wish to be on the committee and wants to inquire about it, they can go to our website and find out that information.
Let me move on to the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 32 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving additional hours for our staff members who work with students with special needs. We're adjusting the salaries for the ESY workers. We're appointing a substitute nurse for the summer. We're, we're, we're changing the rate of pay for the ESY substitute employees. We're appointing compliance officers for the Health Insurance Act. We're appointing a student activity treasure, we're approving the student activity treasures. We're approving staff members to conduct the college essay workshop for our students. We're appointing the August 29th, oops, one minute please, okay. We're appointing the August 29th regents people, who are gonna monitor the regents that are given during the summer. Um, excuse me, I lost my notes. We're approving summer cleaners. We're approving the 2019-20 clubs, club and advisory people. We're enhancing, we're approving the, we're approving the enhanced longevity and graduate courses for the staff members that filed for it this year. We're approving the use of the district facilities by the Putnam County, um, oh, excuse me, I've lost my notes again. Uh, by the Putnam County Emergency Management City, we're approving a one-year extension to the approved service contract through Aramark. We're authorizing the execution of a 2018 APR implementation certi- implementation certification for classroom teachers according to the laws, we're approving the substitute tutor list, we're approving staff members to work as substitutes for the year when necessary, we're approving the 2019 coaches for the fall for their, and their stipings, we're approving an amendment to the agreement with the Tyler Technology Company who maintains our, some of our equipment for us and helps us set things up, we're approving an educational contract for Carmel for one of our students with special needs who are attending their schools, we're approving the superintendent to attend some conferences this summer, one up in Saratoga, the new Superintendent Institute, up in Saratoga, they'll be attending a meeting up in Albany, we're revising the substitute workers' rate of pay according to the contracts, we're approving training days for the staff, we're accepting a generous donation from the Regeneron Science Talent Search for $2,000, we're accepting furniture from the Hudson Valley Office Furniture of a conference table, and we're accepting Grace United Messenger School Supplies for families of approximately $1,000, and Mohegan Lake Volkswagen gave us some gift cards for the elementary school, we're approving a donation of children reading books, we're approving a donation of children reading books that were given to us and to the Hudson Valley Gateway Trade Book Commerce and Peak Skill that we're giving away to them that have no value to us, we're proving to change the order that lets the superintendent change work that is being done under certain situations, and I won't read them, but the minutes will actually list all the readings, it's about a paragraph and a half, we're approving an unpaid leave for an employee who's on childcare leave now, we're extending it, we're approving a contract with the CSEA for the nurses' salary, for the nurses that we recently hired, we're approving Barbara to attend the New York State School Boards Association Convention, and we have a response to the Academic Intervention Service and Education Plan, this plan defines for each student what the qualifications are and what will be done and what's going to happen, and we're accepting a pro, proposal from Badat Home Healthcare to provide nursing care, this is where our nursing care during the school year.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now is the opportunity for public to comment on any topic.
Something I forgot at, at my facilities report was, we're doing a new student drop-off regime after last year, we, it went really well, but we're going to change it to be even more safe and more efficient and to be able to use less staff in the morning to be both more safe and efficient, so essentially what we're going to do is going to have the buses be on the outside lane in front of the high school and then the SRO will direct them, stop them at the, between the schools and then direct them in front of the middle school to be dropped off, have student drop-off. Parents will use the inside lane, so we're not going to be letting children out of the car and, and having them walk in front of buses anymore, which I think is important, they're going to be on the inside lane pulling up past the first crosswalk and, and letting there's, the students out somewhere between that first crosswalk and the second crosswalk that goes between the buildings. I, the, the most important thing to remember, and there will be communications sent out on this, and there will be people here directing folks, especially the first couple weeks of school, most important thing is to, to use the inside lane and to let your children out on the passenger side only onto the sidewalk. Those, if that, if you do that, will be, will be good and safe, and, and to pull up as far as you can to a stop car in front of you before you, you let your children out and have them be prepared to get out, some people are slow getting out of their cars.
Hugs and kisses at home.
What's that?
Hugs and kisses at home.
That's right.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce myself, I am Frank Rialy, and I'm also here to reintroduce a program that's been involved in Putnam Valley School Districts for 27 years, it's the Peers Influence Peers Partnership Program, which started out as a school district program and is now actually sponsored by Putnam County, and what we do is we put young people behind in front of the camera to produce films about the issues that they're most concerned about. We've done films on drinking and driving, we've done films on anorexia, eating disorders, on autism, we are bullying, you name it, every topic that kids are facing, we've done films. Last year's film Saved by the Bell was an extremely good film that was produced about bullying, and it also features the nationwide, a nationally recognized speaker, and I'm going to leave some DVDs here, if you still have a DVD player, if you don't, it's been on public access TV and it's also streamed on our website. Any case, this year our program is going to address a number of topics, one is vaping, and today, in today's New York Times, there was a story about a number of young people that have been sick because of vaping. Another story is about the opiate crisis and an update, we did two films on opiate addiction, Chasing It and Chasing Life, which are now being distributed throughout the country, the libraries, high schools, and colleges, and this is a follow-up piece to that particular thing, as a matter of fact, interestingly enough, this is, this past year was the first year that there was actually a decrease in opiate overdoses, deaths, and that's probably due to the fact of the use of naloxone. The, another piece we're doing will be on school violence, how does it affect, how does it affect young people, the anxiety that they may feel, do they feel safe, or is it the fact that they're walking into a castle that's totally protected, how does it make them feel, and what steps do students need to take, and what steps do communities need to take to not only make them feel safe but anxiety-free? Another piece we're going to be doing on issues that the LGBTQ community faces, and I think that's what we're working on this year, I thought there was a third one, I can't recall, in any case, I would like to introduce my partner who's been with us for 27 years. Before I do though, I have to state that I've had a pleasure to have worked with the young people here in Putnam Valley since 1971, so it's really quite an honor to be here again tonight, so Buck, would you continue, please?
Thank you, Frank. Wanted to give you a little idea of some of the areas that Peers also covers. By the way, the subject matter is something that we get from the kids, they choose what's on their mind. At the end of each year, we have a symposium and they tell us what's on their mind, so that's what we are prompted to do. Along, along with the video technology and filming technology, we also do communication skills, management skills, writing skills, theater management, which is any serious business. I will also tell you that the success of the program is we have about five of our past graduates who are Emmy Award winners. I would say at least five of six are working for all the networks, NBC, ABC, and so on. So, there is a carry-through of what we give, what they get, and what they go away with, so we're very proud of that. We also give a public speaking, which is a very important thing. I've taught college level at times, and one of the things that is missing is be able to communicate, so we work on that, so that lots of our kids who have gone for their interviews knock it out of the ballpark, so to speak. Frank, anything else?
Uh, yeah, to wrap it up, over the 27 years, we have won 11 Telly Awards, the Telly Award is like an Emmy Award but a little lower level, we've won five Communicator Awards, three Aurora Awards, Aurora, Aurora, I'll say that, Aurora Awards, we're nominated for a Peabody Award.
It just shows you what drugs can do.
Nominated for a Peabody Award, and in 2004, we received recognition from President George Bush as one of the thousand points alike for our community's service. So, we invite young people of Putnam Valley to join our program, we meet on Thursday nights, and I believe it's going to be in the same room we ended up with last year, down 101 or something like that? 108? 108. We meet on Thursday nights with the students there, and that's where we do our planning, and then we do filming all over the place, including in this live room, so we would like to express our thanks to Mr. Spittle for, for supporting us and giving us a hand with this, thank you.
Just, just one more thing and then we're gone. When Frank was on faculty, he had a presence that he is not here, eliminates some of that contact, so we would appreciate any of you who have contact with students who are interested in writing, acting, speaking, whatever, let them know about Peers, because we'd love to work with them, thank you.
Thank you.
For the community, if you go to Peers Partnership, one word, peerspartnership.org, that is the website, and you'll find out the events, you'll get to see some of the things that they've done all the time, so all the information about the group is on a website called peerspartnership, one word, dot org.
Any other public comment?
I'm a theater teacher and a special education teacher, but I don't like speaking in front of people, other than my students.
You need to take their speaking course, not.
There you go, no, no, I, I teach public speaking, I just don't like doing it. You give me a script, I'm great. I was just wondering, because last year I just started, because my daughter's been in the Putnam Valley Elementary for a couple of years, and just wondering about, because I didn't see anything, and I knew maybe because it was the switch-over to superintendent, things like that, like a committee or anything to address students who are maybe more advanced in certain areas, like gifted and talented or AP for the elementary schools, because I know the high school has the IBO international.
IBP.
Yes, that, but, because my daughter sometimes gets boarding from, in class and, and doesn't like reading some of the books that come home because they're too easy for her, and so we, we give her additional books to read and things like that, and they said they may try to get a committee together to see if we can, maybe some pull-out classes or something, because I tried to get my daughter into some of the advanced gifted and talented programs during the summer, but they needed a written thing from their gifted and talented instructor, whether it's a pull-out instructor or a full class, and I couldn't provide that to them, so she didn't get the opportunity to do some of those camps she did when she was in kindergarten, first grade, because now that she's in second grade and third, she's going to third grade this year, they need something where she's taken some tests or done some work and things like that. So, she's just losing out on opportunities because she doesn't actually have a teacher who does that. Does that make sense?
Sure. So, I mean, it's something that we certainly strive to challenge all of our students, I know just last year we introduced a math challenge program and an ELA challenge program, I know both of those programs were revamped again this summer, so I would suspect that's something that your, your daughter would have access to, and, and I'm sure we can assist with writing a letter and other things like that. It's something that we always were interested in, and we always strive to find just what's right for each child, whether differentiate within the classroom, and offering some pull-out opportunities like the ELA and Math Challenge, so it's certainly conversations we can continue to have, and we'll continue to explore ways to make sure that we're, that all students are engaged, and, and if you feel as if that's not happening throughout the year, I would encourage you to contact your teacher and, and, and work your way up from there, but certainly we'd be willing to partner to do whatever we can to make sure that your daughter's enjoying her experience here in Putnam Valley.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, anything from the board?
Just, we have a lot of graduates going into their first year of college and a lot of our previous graduates going back to college, so just wish them well in this year.
And this is our last meeting before the official opening of the school year for students and faculty, I just want to hope that everybody's rested, refreshed, and ready to go, it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be fun, so I, and I want to thank everybody for their dedication, all the summer work that was done for the benefit of our students, and I hope that the students are ready to take part in things that benefit them. And if there's nothing else, like a motion to adjourn the business.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.